The older you get, the worse it does. Really, it is. Watch what you're touching, those, your drapes are moving when you move the, uh... Okay, I've just been told number 100 just walked in the door to check in. All right. Nope. All right, we will start while they're checking in. Good evening and welcome to the special town meeting of November 9th, 2013. Um, since a quorum has been obtained, um, we will open the meeting with Reverend Bob giving us an invocation, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Board of Selectmen. Citizens of Rowley, thank you for being here tonight. Let us be together in prayer. O loving God, we thank you for our freedom of assembly, for our freedom to come together, to make decisions, to share our opinions, our viewpoints, and our wisdom. We thank you, dear Lord, for our freedom and for our community. We pray, dear Lord, that your Spirit will inspire us as we conduct the work and the business of our town. We thank you for our rich heritage, for all who have come before us, who've made Rowley what it is today since 1639. Bless us as we continue to live together in community. We thank you and pray always in your holy name. Amen. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, I move to allow the following non-resident individuals permission to speak if called upon during the November 4th, 2013 special town meeting. Judith Pickett, Town Council, Deborah Egan, Town Administrator, Conservation Agent Brent Baselak, Fire Chief James Broderick, Library Director Pamela Jacobson, Coordinator of Health Services Frank Munjani, Principal Assessor Sean McFadden, Building Inspector Ken Ward, Highway Surveyor Ron Keith, John Rizzo, Water Superintendent.
Second.
It's been moved in second to allow the following non-residents, if needed, to speak. All those in favor by sigus five, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Um, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance before we have done the pledge? I just remember we did not do the pledge allegiance. So I'm going to ask somebody from the Board of Selectmen to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Mr. Chairman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Town of Rowley, Commonwealth of Massachusetts warrant the special town meeting November 4th, 2013. Essex, to the constables in the town of Rowley-
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move to suspend the further reading of the November 4th, 2013 special town meeting warrant because present town meeting members have a copy of this warrant in hand.
Second.
Does everybody out here have a copy of the warrant? If not, there's some out on the desk when you checked in. All those? All those in favor of suspending the reading of the warrant signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Just looking to see if we had any of our state officials here. We don't, so we will start off with, um, first article, please.
Madam Moderator, I, Article 1 is to hear and act on reports of committees and boards. It's a article that's open during the whole town meeting.
Okay.
So if somebody has to, uh, has a report to make, uh, they can come in and actually get in between articles when we're working on them. Normally, it stays on the table.
A second.
It isn't good. What are we talking, these mics or their mics? Their mics.
Our mics. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah. Yes, we can.
Okay. Article 2, to see that the instructions, uh, the town will give to the town offices.
Same type of article. It's on the floor. Uh, you can approach it when there's nothing else before the, for the town meeting at that point. It's in between articles.
Okay, both Article 1 and Article 2 are, will be present at all times when anybody wants to present anything.
Article 3. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to suspend in the town meeting the application of Section 19 and Section 20 of the town meeting bylaw pertaining to the reconsideration of all money articles. Such suspension intended for the purpose to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limits of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called, and to give blanket warning hereby that any money article may, at the end of the meeting and after all articles have been acted upon, be moved for reconsideration in order to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapters 59, Section 21(c).
Second.
Article 3. Are there any questions on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 3 passes. Article 4.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $4,000 from line 144 unemployment of Article 5 of the annual town meeting of May 6th, 2013 to be added to line 7. Actually, should that be 2012?
Is it 2000?
2013. Well, okay, yep, you're right. Be added to line 7, Selectmen's expense of Article 5, the annual town meeting of May 6th, 2013, to pay for the expenses incurred to hold the November 4th, 2013 special town meeting for a total appropriation of $18,117.
Second.
Article 4. Are there any questions on Article 4? All those in favor of Article-
Joan?
Yes.
You haven't had the finance?
Oh, financed, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sharon Emery Finance Committee. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thanks.
Okay, it's been recommended by the Finance Committee. Everybody in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 4 passes. Okay, Article 5.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to fund the cost items of collective bargaining agreement between the town and Teamsters Local 170, effective July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2016, for the purposes to transfer and appropriate the sum of $3,182 from line 12, a collective bargaining reserve of FY14 operating budget approved under Article 5 of the annual town meeting, May 6th, 2013, to be added to line 63 firefighters' wages of said budget for a total appropriation of $144,368.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions on Article 5? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 6.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to fund the cost items of collective bargaining agreement between the town and Asme Local 2905, effective July 1, 2013, to July 30th, 2016, and for such purposes to transfer and appropriate the sum of $31,952 from line 12, collective bargaining reserve of the FY14 operating budget approved under Article 5 of the annual town meeting of May 6th, 2013, to be added to the following budget lines. Line 21, assessors administrative assistant wages amount to be transferred, $1,446. Total FY14 appropriation, $23,816. Line 17, assistant accountant wages amount to be transferred, $2,025. Total FY14 appropriation, $16,478. Line 27, treasurer collector administrative assistant wages amount to be transferred, $180. Total FY14 appropriation, $17,758. Line 49, zoning board of appeals administrative assistant wages amount to be transferred, $609. Total FY14 appropriation, $9,014. Line 52, town hall annex janitors wages amount to be transferred, $801. Total FY14 appropriation, $14,180. Line 57, police department wages amount to be transferred, $13,300. Total FY14 appropriation, $1,072,260. Line 69, inspection department wages amount to be transferred, $628. Total FY14 appropriation, $13,137. Line 94, highway department wages amount to be transferred, $10,584. Total FY14 appropriation, $153,958. Line 110, counseling aging wages amount to be transferred, $2,379. Total FY14 appropriation, $48,248.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions on Article 6? Seeing no questions on Article 6, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Article 7.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to fund the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Asme Local 2905, effective July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2016, and for such purposes to transfer and appropriate the sum of $5,000 from line 7, collective bargaining reserve of the fiscal year 14 water department budget approved under Article 6 of the annual town meeting of May 6th, 2013, to be added to the following budget line. Line 4, overtime standby amount to be transferred, $5,000. Total fiscal year 14 appropriation, $129,395.
Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions on Article 7? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Article 8.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44b, to transfer appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund unreserved account, the amount of $10,000 to be used by the Board of Selectmen for costs associated with the evaluation of future purchase and planning of the land owned by Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts Incorporated, shown as property on Assessors Map 18 Lot 7 and as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. For those who have not been tuning into the Board of Selectmen meeting, this, this piece of property Brent, our Conservation Agent Brent Baselak will show you to make you familiar with it. This piece of property starts at Weathersfield Street on the- Have a motion? Motion. Have a second?
Second.
Now I can- But Brent will make us-
Just let him finish this and I'll get the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Brent will, um, have a slideshow to show you where this piece of property is. It's on the western side of Weathersfield Street between, uh, with the, I think almost everybody's familiar with it, going to, it borders on Ezra Park on the other side of, near Haverhill Street. It's a large piece of property. It's 187 acres and I, you know, as I've always said, my, I began in town government on the planning board and it's very important, open space, what the character of the town will look like. The long, 100 years from now, they'll forget about us or who we were, but they'll look back and say, "You did a good job because you preserved this open land." And I think this is one of those cases where this, this Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Committee moving forward and looking at this piece of land. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Brent.
No, turn it over to me first.
I'm turning it over to Madam Moderator.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Okay, and this is going to be a presentation on, um, the site and it should be about no more than five to seven minutes.
Madam Moderator, can everybody see that? Do we need to turn the lights down?
Yeah. Oh, he just did that. Is that, can everybody see that now? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Brent Baselak, Conservation Agent for the town. The Girl Scouts of Eastern Mass Incorporated own property at 390 Weathersfield Street. It's described as being 206.94 acres, more or less. Chairman Snow has given us a little bit of an idea about it, but specifically, the Girl Scouts purchased three parcels in 1965 and combined the deeds relating to those parcels indicate that it's 188 acres, but no complete perimeter survey has ever been done on the property to either confirm or deny that, which is why the Rowley Board of Assessors using modern geographic information system information actually suspect that the acreage is 206, uh, which is what they are currently are assessed on. There is a Girl Scout camp located on the Girl Scout property. No, should be no surprise to anyone living in town or many of the folks who have attended it. It consists of approximately five buildings, a shower house, five tenting areas which have platforms with tents to, to be erected on them, an in-ground swimming pool, a pavilion, a baseball field, basketball court, and an outdoor skills area which consists of ropes and a climbing wall. But most significantly, the undeveloped portion of the property, which is approximately 85%, consists of both upland forests, wetlands along the eastern and western boundaries. Batch Elder Brook and its floodplain go through a significant side of the eastern side of the property, and there's also the possibility of three bernal pools which are amphibian breeding areas, and if every, everyone knows Rowley has mosquitoes, everyone therefore loves amphibian breeding pools because frogs and salamanders and toads consistently consume those mosquitoes and their lava. So if we just start dropping out of the, uh, out of the air and look at Rowley, here's Newburyport Turnpike Route 1 going through with a significant amount of commercial development on it. Right down in this area is the intersection of Haverhill Street, Route 133, and as we go north, we see this funny little area, that's the Rowley Country Club. The greens make the kind of serpentine outline. It's very visible from the air. And here we have the heart, the geographic heart of Rowley, undeveloped forest acreage. It just so happens that that is where a significant portion of the Girl Scout parcel is located. Weathersfield Street's up here, Route 1, as I mentioned before. Down here is Aris Park on Haverhill Street, and then going up along here, we have Dodge Daniels Road making its way down through there. But that undeveloped forested area is more than half occupied by the Girl Scout property. When we talk about conserved property, one of the joys of working for the Conservation Commission here in the town of Rowley is that there are significant conserved properties. The Batch Elder Brook Stream Corridor already has a significant amount of preserved acreage under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, and then bordering on Haverhill Street down here is conserved water department property. And right across the street, folks might be, uh, familiar with the Hunsley Hills property, which has a nice trail system. Just for orientation purposes, here's Prospect Hill with the water tower on it. And then in the Ox pasture development, there's some conserved open space parcels there. And then to the north, recently, the Conservation Commission has been granted, uh, some acreage on Weathersfield Street, like where the bridge crosses the Mill River. And then there's, previously, there's conserved open space there that protects the Mill River Corridor. So as our parachute fails to open and we get closer coming into Rowley, we see that the characteristics of the Girl Scout property are with the Batch Elder Brook Stream Corridor going up along here. You then see where the ball field, there's a baseball field located on the Girl Scout property. And one gets suspicious when one sees property boundaries that appear to snake back and forth. That is more than likely an intermittent stream corridor that follows a wetland system on the western side of the property. And to the north here is where most of the camp facilities are located. And as we zoom into that portion using the town's pictometry, we can actually see the in-ground swimming pool. We can see the caretaker's house. We can see some of the meeting administrative buildings and maintenance building, and then scattered through in this area are little gray rectangles which represent the camping tent platforms. But here's a view that most of us are very familiar with as we drive out on Weathersfield Street. This is the entrance to the center, which is what the Girl Scouts have called their facility. And just to show you examples of some of the actual buildings here, here's a building with meet, office and meeting space. We then have the caretaker or what used to be called the Rangers residence for year-round taking care of the property. And this is a close-up of the in-ground pool. And then for support of the camping activities, this is a roofed pavilion that has fire pits for food preparation and also picnic tables for eating if, if it's raining outside and they can't eat, um, when they're not undercover. And then, as I mentioned, there was some athletic or outdoor, what we call outdoor skills area. This is a climbing tower. They also have rope facilities there, uh, for exercise. And then often that separate portion of the par, property is the baseball field, which has a very great lovely backstop to it. So that just, very briefly, is kind of a quick tour of the Girl Scout property at 390 Weathersfield Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
I think Brent gave us a good overview of the, um, of facilities out there, and this, this $10,000 that we're asking this will, to explore, um, this property from the Board of Selectmen and to look into, there's several entities besides the town that have looked at this. The, um, what was the, I forgot. Oh, the YMCA has, um, shown some interest and also another entity that wanted for handicapped children and also, Green Belt-
Green Belt is, is one of our partners on this project.
And Green Belt, as we watched the Selectmen's meetings, has partnered with us. So this has great possibilities, and I think this is important for us as a town to look, look into this, acquiring this land. Any questions for anyone?
Does anybody have any questions on this regarding the Girl Scout property? First of all, I just, just for the record, we need to have your name and street, please.
Your name and street, please.
Okay, burial and your, and, okay, and your question was regarding what, like developers or just besides the, uh-
The Girl, the, the Girl Scouts have showed an interest of, of, uh, have come to the town to ask the town if they're interested in- Oh, Dave Santimeno? Could you, would you like to come forward from Green Belt?
David, if you could just present who you are and what you're representing, please. Right, yes, you're fine.
Yes.
Uh, good evening. My name is David Santimena. I'm the Director of Land Conservation for Essex County, Green Belt. Um, the Girl Scouts approached Green Belt, uh, over a year ago and asked for our assistance in helping them understand the potential to find conservation outcomes for two properties on the North Shore that they had determined were surplus properties and they were going to move in the, in the direction of, of a sale. One is the property you're discussing here this evening in Rowley, the other is the property in Beverly. It was really that outreach to us that triggered this process of discussions with the town to understand what level of interest the town might have in purchasing the property for conservation purposes.
The question is developers.
The question was-
Was on developers, regular, you know, somebody building up on that.
Yeah, the, well, the, the Girl Scouts have, have chosen to work through Green Belt and through the town initially before, in hopes that, that there can be a conservation outcome for the property before they open the property up to the, the broader market, which would certainly include the development community.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Just, just to follow up on that, the Girl Scouts want to keep the property preserved basically in an open condition or for camping purposes. That's why the Board of Selectmen has been talking to the, to the YMCA and a couple of other camping organizations in hopes that we can partner up in some way to be able to afford to buy the property, keep it as open space, and also keep it as a, a camping type area. There's a great deal of high ground out there, so that if this deal falls through, and I've, we've discussed this at a Selectmen's meeting, there are really no one else out there at this time that has money in a nonprofit sense that would be able to probably purchase this property. So if it goes for houses, uh, with the amount of high ground out there, you're probably talking 50, 60, 70 new homes, which is nice tax money, but it also is going to add a lot of kids to the schools and require a lot of town services. So this is a beautiful parcel of land, and part of the idea of this $10,000 is to allow us to explore all the possibilities and hopefully partner up with some of these other organizations so we come to, uh, a, a situation where we can purchase the property, keep it as, as open space, hopefully keep it as some kind of a, a camping facility, and also be available for recreational opportunities for the town. So the big thing is if we don't take advantage of this in the next year or two, uh, I'm sure the developers are going to be lined up looking to develop this piece of property.
Are there any other questions, more questions regarding this? Okay.
Just to follow up, Madam-
Yep.
Moderator. Again, it's follow- Again, it's a follow-up. Selectman Peterson said, "This is the character of our town, what the future of our town will be, what it looks like." And this piece of property, as you've seen, is right in the center of the town. And I think this is an important piece of property to not to be developed and to keep an open space and for recreation purposes, you know, for the future of the town. Again, you know, long after this town meeting, long after we pass over this scene 50, 100 years from now, people will look back and say, "They did the right things."
Could you please come forward and use the mic and state your name and address, please? I should have said that at the beginning of the meeting, that all addressed questions should be done here from the mic, please.
Glenn Blakeney, Weathersfield Street. How long is the, how long will the Girl Scouts give us? What's their timeframe? Do we have a drop date date?
They seem to work.
Dave, do you know? Wait a minute. I was going to say Dave.
No, no. I'm stealing Dave's thunder.
Not at all. The Girl Scouts understand that any devious acquisition of this sort is going to take a good amount of time. They have indicated that they're going to wait until sometime towards the end of next year to see the acquisition concluded. So they're not putting us under the gun. They've given us that amount of time to work.
How will we fund the purchase of this property?
We're looking to with several entities, not just the town. So it won't be just the burden, it won't be just fall on the town.
Also, sir, a lot of the funding will come from CPC funds for conservation land. The biggest chunk of the town's portion would be CPC money probably for conservation purposes or recreation purposes, which that money's allowed to be spent for. And if we can hook up with a camp-type facility, that's what, one of the things we need to do is get an assessment. And this $10,000 we put towards getting an assessment for it and then determining who we can partner up with, hopefully, in terms of making this purchase.
Seeing any more questions on this? Are we all ready to vote on it, on Article Eight? All those in favor of the $10,000 for Article Eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Sam Strife, Kittery Avenue, Member of the Conservation Commission. I move the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44B, to transfer and appropriate from the Community Preservation Unreserved Account the amount of $18,000 to be used by the Conservation Commission for costs associated with the granting of a perpetual conservation restriction by the Town of Rowley to be held by Massachusetts Audubon Society, covering all or a portion of the approximately 103.3 plus or minus acres of land known as the Bradstreet Farm Open Space Parcel at Main Street, Lot A, as shown on the Assessors' Map, 26, Parcel 26, Lot 1, and for the installing of monument boundary markers on various sections of the property, which is under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission and as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Okay. Are there any, Sam? Pretty well self-explanatory? Okay. Are there any questions regarding this article? All right. Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Nine passes. Article Ten.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the Council on Aging Board and Chief Procurement Officer to dispose of the 2005 Chevrolet van by trading it in and to appropriate the proceeds of the sale to its purchase of a minivan.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding Article Ten? All those in favor of Article Ten signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Ten passes. Article Eleven.
Madam Moderator, I move that the authorized but unissued balance of the $2,500,000 bridge reconstruction borrowing authorized by vote of town, of the town under Article 35 of the warrant at the November 13, 2006 special town meeting is hereby rescinded.
Article Eleven's been moved in second, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Basically, what's happened is the town's advisors and financial advisors, actually, and the Municipal Bond Council have recommended this article. The town authorized $2.5 million in 2006 to cover the cost to rebuild three bridges damaged by the May 2006 Mother's Day rainstorm. I think we all remember that one. The design and construction cost did not exceed the $2.5 million, and the federal government reimbursed the town for 75 percent of the cost. Passage of this article is necessary for the town to close out this borrowing on the town's financial records. So it's basically a housekeeping, a bookkeeping move that we're making here.
All right. Are there any questions regarding this article? All those in favor of Article Eleven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Eleven passes unanimously. Article Twelve.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to change the elected position of the Highway Surveyor to an appointed position pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 1B, and to schedule a ballot vote on this matter at the next annual election.
Second.
This does not require a recommendation from the Finance Committee because there is no money involved. Are there any questions regarding this Article Twelve? Or which one of you would like to, Bob? Do you want to present anything?
Say anything on this?
Yeah, the idea of this is, as we all know, Scott Levitt, Highway Surveyor in Tree Warden, passed away this past year. And this is an opportunity, most towns around, the Highway Surveyors are appointed. In today's scheme of things, we need the people, really, to have qualifications, some engineering background, financial background, management background, these kinds of things, which the Board of Selectmen would be in charge of appointing if this article passes at the general town meeting. So what we're doing here is, this just, with your authorization, this puts this article on the ballot in May, at the town election in May, and then the townspeople as a whole at the ballot box will determine whether this position remains elected or whether we make it an appointed position. The Board of Selectmen has supported making it an appointed position just because we feel that it needs a lot of expertise these days, the way the financial market and the building construction, planning board issues, things like that, that we really need people that are qualified to hold this position, and it's a good-sized salary, so we feel that that should be done. So this, all this does is authorize us to put this on the, required by law, to change it from an appointed, from elected position to an appointed position, and be done at the May elections.
Just as a follow-up to Dave, what Dave said, we were very blessed to have Scott Levitt for so many years as our Highway Surveyor. And again, to follow up, we need a professional in that position, and the Board of Selectmen, you know, feels that it should be an appointed position.
Are there any questions regarding this article? All those in favor of Article Twelve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We'll be on the page thirty. And Article Thirteen is in order.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to change the elected position of Tree Warden to an appointed position pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 1B, and to schedule a ballot vote on this matter at the next annual election.
Second.
This also does not require approval by the Finance Committee?
Again, this is a position held by Scott Levitt moving forward. This, again, should be a professional position and appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The Board has looked at this and felt that this is the way we should go.
Any questions? Seeing no questions on Article Thirteen? All those in favor of Article Thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Thirteen passes. Page thirty-one.
Cliff Pierce, Planning Board. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $22,377 plus interest from security held by the town. Such security haven't been deposited by Sheehan Estates Realty Trust and in compliance with General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81U, 11, and General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 39M, to be used by the Board of the Selectmen to pay for completing the road construction of Gerzak Lane and the completion and recording costs of as-built and street acceptance plans in accordance with the approved subdivision plan. This involves the Sheehan Estates...
I need to just get the Finance Committee's recommendation before you start. Finance Committee on Article Fourteen?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you.
Thank you. This involves the Sheehan Estates subdivision, also known as Gerzak Lane. Unfortunately, the developer of that subdivision left town without completely finishing it. Fortunately, though, the town is holding a cash bond of over $22,000. And all that this article would do would be to authorize the town to take that money and use it to complete the subdivision as originally planned and to prepare the as-built plan so that the road can be accepted by the town.
All those in favor of Article Fourteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Fourteen passes. Page thirty-four. Article Fifteen.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the Rowley zoning bylaw by adding a new Section 8.9 temporary moratorium on registered marijuana dispensaries as printed on pages four and five in Article Fifteen of the November 4, 2013 special town meeting.
There is no requirement on this by the Finance Committee?
Do your presentation. Thank you. You may remember that about a year ago, the citizens of Massachusetts voted to legalize medical marijuana. What this means is that something that will be known as registered marijuana dispensaries will be opening in various cities and towns in the Commonwealth and possibly including the town of Rowley. This change in the law has raised new planning issues for towns. The Attorney General has held for a rule that towns cannot absolutely ban these dispensaries, but they can impose reasonable restrictions in terms of where, what part town they're located in. And towns are also allowed to enact a moratorium of up to one year to basically put off the decision on how to treat these dispensaries. So this is what this bylaw would do. It would put it off for a year, and during that time, the town would work on a bylaw that would determine where the dispensaries can be located in the town and what other reasonable restrictions ought to be imposed on them.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Fifteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Fifteen passes. Article Sixteen.
My name is Tim Toomey. I'm the Board of Water Commissioners. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $32,000 from Line Two Business Manager's salary of the fiscal year 14 Water Department budget approved under Article Six at the annual town meeting of May 6, 2013, to be transferred to Line Eight Maintenance and Expenses of the fiscal year 14 Water Department budget under, approved under Article Six of the annual town meeting of May 6, 2013, for the total appropriation of $419,000. Do I have a second? Stewie Delzel.
Stewie has to sign that.
Okay.
Finance Committee on Article, well, let me go to the Board of Selectmen first. It says here I have two recommendations, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. All right. Finance Committee, what's your recommendation on Article?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Okay. Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, Board of Selectmen recommends it.
All righty. Tim, would you like to, Stewie's up to sign that, and then would you present? You want to make a little bit of more explanation on it?
Yeah, this is accommodate. We had lost our business manager, and this is, we're going to take this money and we're going to look at getting a contractor to fulfill her duties at the department on the interim, and so that we needed to appropriate this money for that purpose. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions regarding Article Sixteen? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Sixteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Page thirty-nine. Article Seventeen.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to repurpose the balance of the Community Preservation Act funds in Article Eight Town Common Tree Restoration of the April 30, 2012 special town meeting warrant to be used by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose and installa, pardon me, purchase and installation of lighting fixtures on the Rowley Town Common as part of the continued historical restoration of the town common.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Presentation or whatever recommendation?
If I could comment, Madam Chairman?
Yes, go right ahead.
Madam Moderator, if you've gone by the common in the evening, we have about seven lights that have been installed, and there are 21 more to be installed on the common. And we're trying to get the rest of the money. This will add to the installation on the other two sides of the town common, so it will complement the trees that have been installed and put the lighting all the way around all three sides.
Just as a follow-up, I'd like to, everybody who's worked on the Town Common Restoration Committee, I want to salute you. You've done a great job. It looks fantastic, as you will buy it. Dan Sapansky, Chairman, he's sitting here tonight. Dan, thank you for your leadership, and all those on the committee, thank you again.
I have one this morning here that is... I have on this warrant here that is, the Community Preservation Committee will be recommendation from the floor. Somebody here from the Community Committee? Okay, Don, would you mind coming up and restating that up here so that the question could be answered?
The committee's only sour note on this whole thing. Do we want lights along the streets where kids are running? It scares me. It's a safety issue, but I'm only one vote, one of the members.
Along Route 1A? On 1A?
It's kind of scary. As a safety issue.
Don, I mean, I don't.
Bob, could you speak into the mic so everybody could hear you?
Don, I guess I don't quite understand what would be the safety issue. I mean, if we've got.
Having the lights, they're talking about sidewalks, and they'd be lit, and the kids would be running up and down on the sidewalks. And that's scary.
Well, I mean, we have sidewalks throughout the town, basically. I mean, particularly around the center of town, and we have streetlights on most of those streets also. I thought it would be, well, no, I understand what you're saying, but I think it would, because of the light, particularly at night, the kids would show up more. Now, on Main Street, I think, is the one you're talking about, right? The Main Street side? The street lighting now is on the south side of the road, which is opposite the common. With the new lights, it'll be on the common side, so that the kids playing along that edge of the field in the common and along the sidewalk would be lit at night. So, that would add an element of safety, at least. You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding Article 17? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Folks, that only took about 47, 48 minutes. I thank you all. Now, if you would like to.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And before we leave, I would like, if everybody wouldn't mind, a couple of things. Yes. First of all, we need to vote on the motion, but before I do that, Sue would like to thank her counters, even though they weren't needed. She's keeping your names for the May town meeting. All right, all those in favor of, signify by the end of this meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And thank you all for coming out, and if you wouldn't mind, just folding up your chairs and hanging them up in the back, it'll help the janitors. Thank you very much.